April 5th, 2015, meeting of the Yukon City Council to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Pastor Scott Sparks of South Yukon Church of Christ, and remain standing for the flag salute please.
Let's bow together. Father, we want to thank you for this evening and the commitment, the time, the energy that these civil leaders give us each and every day. Especially now, Father, we give ask for just courage and boldness in their leadership, for wisdom and insight, that they can set clear directions and paths for this city, and that they can help lead us into a very positive future. Father, we thank you for these individuals. We pray that you'll be with them in their good times, but that you'll also be with them during the tough times of their jobs. And we pray for their courage, we pray for their stamina, and Father, we just give you thanks for what they do for us. Now give us a good meeting tonight. May the decisions that need to be reached be reached with wisdom. We thank you for all that you do for us as a community. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll please. Alberts, here. Russell, here. McCarran, here. Schmaestra, here. Yanda, here. At this time, we come to the part of the meeting for presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation this evening for Autism Awareness Week. Heather Small is here, so Heather, if you want to meet me down front, let's, we'll go over our proclamation, please. So first, we'll read the proclamation, and then Heather, I'll ask you to make some comments, and there's some other visitors, and if you'll introduce them, we'd like to meet everyone this evening. Alright, here we go. Alright, so it says, "Proclamation: Whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States, affecting more than three million people; and whereas autism is a neurological disorder and can result in significant lifelong impairment of individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication; and whereas early and accurate diagnosis, appropriate education, intervention, and therapy are vital to the future growth and development of those with autism; and whereas it is fitting and proper to ensure that individuals living with autism have access to lifelong care and services needed to achieve their greatest potentials." Now therefore, I, John Alberts, Mayor of Yukon, do hereby proclaim April the 2nd through the 8th Autism Awareness Week, signed under my hand and sealed this 5th day of April 2016. Welcome this evening, and who's with you this evening?
My son, Nathan, and he's autistic.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, how are you guys? Welcome, thank you for coming.
Hello.
Hey now, I gotta put my mouth on that, you can't put your mouth on that. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you for coming, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Yes, but thanks for coming, you come back any time, okay? Alright, thank you so much. Alright, what a great cause. Next is our visitor section. This is my favorite part of the meeting, where people with an idea that they want to share with the council, they can come, and it looks like Pastor Scott Kenny is here this evening, not to pray, but to share some information with us, so if you would like to come forward at this time and share, we're anxious to hear what you have to say, sir.
I'm really proud of the council for doing that, and I have a granddaughter who's autistic.
Yeah, it's awesome.
And it's just a wonderful thing that people are being more aware of it, and it's great that our legislature is passing legislation to help support these kids, and you know, they're wonderful kids.
Knowledge is power, and I mean, having more knowledge and sharing, that's important.
That's right.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to share with the council and the city of Yukon that Trinity Baptist Church is really excited to let everyone know that we have started a free medical clinic. And to my awareness, as we've talked to lots of people, we're only free medical clinic in Canadian County. And we're having it on Tuesday nights, in fact, it's going on right now, it's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM every, not Wednesday night, every Tuesday night, so a Tuesday night from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And it's for people who don't have any insurance. Now you would think, under the conditions today, with all our federal help and Obamacare and lots of things, that there would be very few people out there in need of medical care, but I didn't believe it myself until we really saw and started to assess the needs, especially here in Canadian County. We're dealing with a lot of the hospitals and the clinics, it's amazing, the people that come and have no medical, way to get medical help at all. And so what we're doing is, we're asking people to come and make appointments, and we're seeing them and giving them as best medical care we can. We have a medical director, Shelley Kelly, she is a nurse practitioner, our director of our clinic is Deila Hall, she's a BSN RN, and I've given you all some little cards, brochures up there, and with the names and numbers, and I would just ask you all and everyone here, and I'd be willing to give these cards to anyone, to just get the word out. We put these cards up at the library, we're getting lots of inquiries, there's some of the ministries that are going on to a lot of the apartment complexes, they're so excited to hear, because they know lots of people who need this medical help. So anyway, we're really excited to be, to do this, we feel like that's something that our church can give back to the community, and that's kind of what the Lord said, you know, it's better to give than receive, and you know, we, there's lots of people in need, and we feel like we want to be the catalyst. Now, we don't want to keep it to ourselves, we're going to have the minister alliance at our church tomorrow, and I'm going to share with other ministers, and we're looking for people who'd like to partner with us, and that means pray for us, or if you know some doctors who might be interested even considering helping once a month, maybe once every two months. Nurses, pharmacists, we have a full pharmacy, we're licensed by the Oklahoma Pharmaceutical Board, and everyone's got, we all got licensed doctors, nurses, pharmacists, we've got all the licenses, we're even covered by insurance for malpractice, I mean, we do everything that we can there, we do not give or prescribe narcotics, so we just, we don't want to go that route, and so. So one of the things I'd like to share with you, if someone would like to help us hear some of the needs, we, there's some partnerships, if people would like to again donate their time or resources, and we're always looking for some money, everything, it takes a startup, but someone was gracious in our church, gave us $5,000, so we're able to start. We're actually looking for an off-site location, so it could just be a standalone in the community, maybe a house or a storefront, but we call it Faith Clinic, because we're going by faith, and we really, we've really not had to spend any of the church funds or any private funds, people are just giving us the things that we're in need, so we're really excited about that. We're going to nursing homes to look at getting medications that they're not using, and we're also asking people if they'd want to give, donate $4 gift cards from Walmart. Therefore, you know, there's a whole list of $4 medications that we can prescribe, our physicians prescribe, if we don't have them on hand, you can take this to Walmart and you can get your medicines. And so we're looking at volunteers, we have volunteers from numerous different churches, from the Manopantry, Compassionate Hands, but all across the scope of life here in Yukon. We need some over, just over-the-counter medicines, that people would come, you know, just cough medicines, and you know, Tylenol, those kind of things. But anyway, we just want to share with Yukon, our community, but all really Canadian County, that we're looking for this to grow and continue to see more and more people. We had three patients, four patients last week, we have nine patients tonight, and so anyway, it's a very exciting thing, and so we're just happy to serve our community or, and the church sponsor this, but we would like to again allow people to come and partner with us, and we can continue to minister to this community in that way.
Thank you very much.
You may.
Great news, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other visitors this evening? Seen none? Then we will recess at this time as the Yukon City Council, and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is Item 1A, that's the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion, and if an item does not meet with approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 15th, 2016. Do I have a motion, please?
So.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarran?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
The next item is 2A, and that's consider designating attractive land being a part of the southeast quarter of Section 16, Township 12 North, Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. East Main Street, Yukon Parkway is surplus and authorizing its sale. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Mr. Manager, this piece of property, what piece of property is this, please?
Mr. Mayor, this particular piece of property was a property that was designated, I think, to construct a new city hall.
Okay.
And we do not feel at this particular time, this is in the best interest of the city, to construct a new building there, and we feel that this property needs to be sold in order to pay the note off.
Alright, as far as a sale, how will that be handled? Will you use a realtor to list that?
It'll be a commercial realtor listed to handle this particular property.
Okay. Alright, any other questions? Questions? They'll help us establish a price and work our way through that process?
Yes.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Schmaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next, I'm sorry, at this time, we will recess as the YMA, and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item is the consent docket, this item will be placed, I'm sorry, these items will be placed on the agenda, so the city council by unanimous consent can designate those routine items that wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. City manager recommends a motion that will approve A, the minutes of the regular meeting of March the 15th, 2016, B, the minutes of the special meeting of March the 29th, 2016, C, payment of material claims in the amount of $563,840.15, D, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, or donation, and E, setting the date for the next regular council meeting for April the 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. Schmaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarran?
Yes.
Next item is 2, that's reports of boards, commissions, and city officials, do we have any reports this evening? None?
No, denied, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item 3 is consider approving ordinance number 1335, an ordinance which provides amendment to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by amending Section 114-34 by providing for future increases in fees for water services and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Gentlemen, anything? Ladies?
Presentation.
Mr. Crowe, do you have some information you'd like to share with the council?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the council, I think people need to understand exactly why we got, how the city got to this position, and kind of explain our water system and understanding how it works. In 2013, we were brought into a meeting with Oklahoma City, they talked about their water needs and the direction the city was going to go in the future. They explained to us that they have four projects they were going to work on, this project's going to cost a total of $2.2 billion, and that the only way these could be funded is through the users of its water, and they were evaluating all users and what cost it was going to be applied over the coming years. They feel that in the next, within the next 10 years, or less, and it's going to be less, that the water charges they were making to us were going to double. And they begin to talk about the four areas that they need to improve. One is a second raw water supply line, improvement of Draper, Stanley Draper and Hefner Treatment Plan upgrades, an interconnection between the Draper and Hefner service area, so if one breaks down, they could transport water back and forth, an expansion of the reuse program from the sewer treatment plant at Draper. You look at the 10-year capital improvement plan, it's $2.2 billion, and it's broken down into how much was going to be spent on each particular area of the 9, $9,21,7, 42% of that goes for the new water line, and then you talk about the raw water pipeline and the other two, and it costs $2.2 billion. They talked about their water demand and that they're experiencing, and back in 2013 and 14 of those drought years, that they had reached their peak as far as production in how many acre-feet of water, how many gallons a day they could produce from the various plants, and they need to have more water to service all the different communities and Oklahoma City for future growth in the area. When they looked at, of course, the Canadian River and the water that went into Hefner, most of us recall that the problems they had to the north, and that they drained that lake, and it was a problem, there was no more water to come down. The lake has been replenished at this time with some rain, but again, the people at Canton were very upset over that, but the lake was pretty much, there was no additional water for a long time. They then looked at what their proposed capacity for the second pipeline to use the existing rights, and if you would follow the number of acre-feet they have, is that it only adds 30,854 acre-feet a year, but the second pipeline and future water rights, which is the Sardis area, would add an additional 90,121 acre-feet a year. The second pipeline is a 100-mile, parallel 60-inch pipeline to the existing 60-inch pipeline that is there today. The estimated cost again is $921.7 million for a raw water supply. The benefits of the project is access to full water rights from Lake Otoka and McGee Creek, a raw water system reliability, and capacity for future and additional raw water supply as they get those items. Second item is looking at the treatment plan improvements. They're going to increase the capacity of Hefner from 100 to 150 million gallons a day, and Lake Stanley Draper from 150 to 200 million gallons a day. This has improved the Draper liability, and it cost $319 million. Capital improvement plans, and of course, the key project is an interconnection between Draper and Hefner. This particular item is, they studied it and decided that in order to send raw water to Hefner or treated water, that it was best to send the treated water, because it could utilize those interconnect lines that they're talking about between these, so the treated water was the lowest-cost option, and it provides for service even if one of the water treatment plants goes offline. It would also conserve the raw water supply during shortage. Another one is the, we talked about, is the augment the water supply to Lake Hefner with highly-treated effluent. This is to treat the sewer treatment plant water from at Draper, I mean, pardon me, to the north Deer Creek area, this water would be then sent back into Hefner, and it would serve any high-use customers along this pipeline, and this is something that they feel is very necessary to do. So when they looked at that, and they talked about what they were going to do immediately to the various communities that utilize this water, that they were going to have to raise our rates, which they instituted a program in order to do that. And so the water rate evaluation and proposed rates, they talked about. In order to have water within our community, a reliable water supply, we are required to have a, what they call a reservation rate at the lake, at Lake Draper. We have a 60 million gallons a month that we reserve for our community. We have to do this in order that we have water throughout the summertime when our greatest demand is, but under their program, we're required to do this. At the time of this, in 2013 and early on, we paid a dollar per thousand per month for the reservation, or $60,000 out of the city that we paid per month to Oklahoma City. The water we used after this was 36,000, 36 cents per thousand. And when they looked at increasing it on the reservation rate, we've experienced in 2014 an 18-cent increase, so it went from a dollar to a dollar and 18 cents. 2015, we received another 18-cent increase to a dollar 36 cents, and in 2016, it's going to a dollar 56. So over a three-year period, we've increased that cost of a dollar to a dollar 56, which is a 156% increase. When you add that, our cost goes from $60,000 per month to $93,600 per month, just for the reservation amount, plus the commodity use has gone from 36 cents to 43 cents. Any excess water over that 60 million gallons, and we have not done that recently, but we have had it in the past, it goes to 557 per thousand, per thousand gallons. So you can see what we've had, the city has experienced. As presented to you all previously, the city did a cost study of what does it cost us per thousand gallons to provide water? The use of water purchased from Oklahoma City, the well water purchase, treatment plant supply, management costs, capital maintenance, equipment costs, distribution costs, utility building costs, and administration costs, came to $4.53 per thousand. Our current rate that we were charging is $1141 for 0 to 2,000 gallons, from 2,001 to 12,000, it's $379, and 12,001 over, it's $446. If you look at the increase in those rates from 2014, there's only a 4 cent increase in those rates that we've experienced here in the city. And you could look at what our rates are going at from Oklahoma City, what the rate we've experienced at this particular area in time. If you took the water usage for so many thousand gallons, use our water cost, it came to $2,520,247. This is our cost. We billed $2,178,130, which leaves a deficit of $342,117. And looking at the proposed water rate to help cover this cost that we've experienced, city staff is recommending to you that we raise the base rate from $1141 to $1350, times 8,000 customers, that brings in $200,640 annually. This still would leave a deficit of the item that I showed you of $141,477. This is what has been presented to you previously. So in effect, when you look at our base rate of $1141, $379 per thousand gallons between 2,001 to 12,000, 12,000 over is $446. There's no recommendation or recommended rate increase for anything besides the base rate, and is recommended before you tonight to raise that to $1350. We looked at all the rates that have gone into effect with the sewer rate increase, the Oklahoma City cost, the average water bill, no matter how you figure it, will go up approximately $9.43 a month. Doesn't matter how you figure your bill, if you looked at 2,600 gallons, you look at whatever the rate is, there was a mistake on the next one, but still shows you the $9.43 increase. That would be with the water rate, the Oklahoma City water rate, 209 to 234 and $5, it would be an increase of $9.43 a month. This is staff has recommended for you, this item was put off last week for reconsideration tonight, and staff is recommending approval, and we'd be more than happy to answer any question you might have.
Any questions for the manager by council?
One.
Questions?
Even at that rate, we're still going to be under budget on what?
I feel we will, and I will say this, that we hope to hold this for a while, but keep in mind that Oklahoma City will be reevaluating their rates fairly quickly. I don't think we'll get an increase next year, no, I don't see that happening, but I do feel the next couple of years, they'll come back, and they expect to raise it at least double from the original cost, or more if they're, you know, whatever their cost will be. They can't pass bonds to cover all this over that period of time, and so this is being passed on to the consumers throughout the metropolitan area, and again, I could say, I think it'll be a couple of years before we get another increase, but that is according to what Oklahoma City has told us.
Thank you. Questions?
We're seeing a small shortfall there, Jim, is that we're going to be able to cover that shortfall reasonably?
Yes, I think we will, sir. I think, of course, everybody knows we're facing a pretty tight budget. You know, I've been on the job three days, so I haven't got it all solved yet, but we are going to be short, it's going to be a very tight budget next year, as I reported, but as soon as we get our audit report back, and we find a base of where we're starting from, we will make some decisions for the, recommended to the council, and we will have a balanced budget, and we will make and cover our expenses. Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Thank you.
But these rates are strictly related to the increase in our cost of water, it doesn't have anything to do with the other, the rest of the budget.
This is exactly on the water only, not because of any problems with the budget, ma'am.
Anything else?
I, well, I did have one other thing too, I just wanted to make a comment so that everybody knows when they talk about reserving water and stuff like that, that we're actually, I think, better off, because previously we had had the opportunity with Oklahoma City to reserve water, and I think we're, Jim might want to comment on that, I know only being on the job three days, you might, but we do, we do have a reserve, and a lot of other cities do not, and I think they probably are not going to be nearly as well off as we are. Does that, I think that's?
That's correct, right, their cost will be going up considerably. We presently have to blend our water, this is very important, people understand, because of the arsenic in our water, we have to blend it. We tried to do it on 55 to 45%, it depends on the level of the arsenic in which wells, and which wells we do use. We also, I think, the last period with problems with our wells, it's been an 81% Oklahoma City water, 19% ours. We think we can do a lot better than that, and try to get that down. But again, each of our wells has different levels of arsenic, so you have to monitor what that is, and when you complete with it, because we can't get above 10 parts per billion in arsenic. And we still have to report anything over 5 parts per billion to the state if we go above 5. So it's something that, it gets rather complicated, but it's something that our public works does a great job, and working with Veolia Water- in working with Viola Water and doing the exceptional job of keeping that handle.
Thank you, sir. I want to give also an opportunity, are there any visitors this evening that would like to address the council about the matter, please? If there are, if you come forward at this time and give us your name and address? Any visitors?
I, my comments are, I'm, I think that we're grateful to have this arrangement with Oklahoma City. I know that comes at a cost, and that cost has to unfortunately be shared with the consumers, but the entire time I've been on the council now for close to fifteen years, the idea of water has been an issue. And it's not an issue that's going to go away, and unfortunately, I do think that these costs will continue to rise, but also we're blessed in this arrangement with Oklahoma City that we will continue to have water, so. I'm thankful, I'm sorry that we need to raise the cost and pass that on, but I'm, I'm happy that we are able to provide our community a plentiful, I won't say a limitless amount of water, because aren't we still on the odd even, even rationing?
We will always be on an odd even rationing with Oklahoma City. That's a permanent thing. We have a standard that they've given to all the communities that if they get to a certain level of, in a drought situation, it'll go to twice a week watering, once a week watering, and then of course no watering at all. But this is standard in all communities that buy water from Oklahoma City in any way, shape, or form have to be on odd even rationing forever.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Thought I'd share that point with the community as well. Any other questions, comments? Questions or comments? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Smystola?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Next item is four, and that's consider approving the bids, bid specifications and authorizing the.
Emergency, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I drew all over, my notes are on top of it. Next item is three A, and that's consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number one, three, three, five, please. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll. McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Now we'll move to four. Item four, that's consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing the city engineer to solicit bids for the year fifteen Community Development Block Grant, Small City Set Aside Roadway Replacement Improvement Project. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts? Yes. Smystola?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is five, and that's consider approving a conditional use permit allowing the continuance for the variance of a, of the height regulation for the flagpole located at the Devon Storage, one, seven, 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 West Vandeman Avenue, as recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yanda?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Russell?
Yes.
The next item is six, and that's consider approving an application for a final plat for Stonegate Office Park, attractive landline in the southeast quarter of the section thirty, township twelve, north range five west of the Indian Meridian, Yukon Canadian County, Oklahoma, sixteen oh one Health Center Parkway by Stonegate Partners LLC is recommended by the Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystola?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. McCarron?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
The next item is seven, and that's consider accepting additional right-of-way to allow for the future intersection improvements for attractive land situated in the northwest quarter of section thirty-three, township twelve, north range five west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma City, Canadian County, Oklahoma, one thousand North Check Hall Road, on queue number one, two, 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 from Oklahoma Check Hall Road LLC is recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Item eight is the next item, and that's consider accepting and approving a permanent easement for the existing sanitary sewer to serve attractive land situated at the northwest quarter of section thirty-three, township twelve, range north five, township twelve north, range five west of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma City, Canadian County, Oklahoma, which is one thousand North Check Hall. That's the on queue number one twenty-two from the Check Hall Road LLC is recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystola?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts? Yes. New business? Thank you, sir. Mr. McCarron?
Well, I would want to thank the, the folks that came up from from the autism group, there were some actually, some folks that drove all the way up from Chickasha and everything for the, for the award thing tonight. I just appreciated them coming. I think that's a pretty good issue. I'm also appreciative of the Faith Clinic starting out. It will be nice to see how that works out for our community. And just for everyone, you know, water will be a major commodity that's going to continue to be in the back of all of our pockets for the rest of the, you know, certainly my lifetime. And certainly will be, you know, more valuable than a lot of other commodities that are out there today. And so we just have to be very careful about how we look forward and try to do the best we can with managing that so that we can always have enough water for each of our towns. With that, Mayor, I yield back.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Russell?
Yes, I would like to thank Pastor Mike Sparks for coming tonight to get us started here. Scott Keeney with Trinity on the Faith Clinic, that's a real good idea. I'm glad to see that taking place and people needs to take advantage of it. It doesn't have insurance. I just like to thank everyone that came tonight and supported and participated in this. It's, I like to see the, the help when the people show up.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Smystola?
Yes, I just would like to say, I believe that Yukon is a wonderful town and there are a lot of people in it that want to do the right thing and want us to continue on with our future that's going to be that we all care for each other, and you know what I'm talking about, John? Basically. I have a daughter that's got cancer and there was a a program at my church on Sunday and a lot of people were there and made donations to her because she doesn't have insurance. Anyway, it's a wonderful town and we're going to continue on and be better every day and welcome back, Mr. Crosby.
Councilwoman Yanda?
Well, I would just like to ask the citizens of Yukon to remain patient and positive as this council works tirelessly and selflessly through the difficult situations that we're experiencing. Yukon is a great place and it's a great city and it will continue to be so. Thank you.
Mr. Crosby?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I would just like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens again at this community. It's a great honor and I appreciate it. I promise you we'll do our best to, things will be straightened out and we will go forward in a very positive manner.
Thank you, sir. All right, along the same lines, Mr. Crosby, welcome back. We look forward to working with you and working through our situation dealing with the issues and like the other council members have said, we still have a lot of work at hand. We will, we'll see it through. No one's going here. All of the people that are sitting here behind this little row, I don't think there's anyone that has been here for less than forty or fifty years. So that's a long time. So what is that, two hundred and fifty years of commitment to this community or more? And I don't see it wavering. It's, we're here, we're here for the long term. I also want to take a chance to say thank you to Temi De Spain for working as the acting city manager and all your tiredless efforts that took place over the last several weeks and months and taking my phone calls at all hours of the night, whenever I was in a panic and helping me deal with that. And then also the staff members. I mean, there are many staff members that have helped work through this transition. Without you all, it wouldn't be possible. It's just, it's very important that everyone continue to recognize that you do have a great place that you're working, that you are a part of a larger issue than what exists now. Like Erlene said, you know, there was a thing at the church the other day where we raised money for her daughter. You know, on the same day that they announced that we had a one point three million dollar budget issue or money that was missing, I think was actually the breaking news, seven hundred people were laid off and, from DHS that day. And then I also think that the bomb in Brussels went off that day. So, and I'm not minimizing what's going on here, but there are other things that are going on around our own community and in, in the world, and we need to recognize the situation that we're in. We need to understand why we ended up here, how we ended up here. And we need to understand that so it doesn't, doesn't repeat itself. But more importantly, we need to figure out where we're going. And we're moving forward. And like Erlene says, there's an opportunity. Social media is a wonderful thing and I know there's a lot of communication and banter that goes back and forth on social media. And some of the people seem to be a bit prideful who throw up some anonymous name from time to time and talk about issues that may or may not be relevant to the community. But some of the communication that's going on out there is a little bit damning to the community and even to some of the people. If you've got an issue that needs to be resolved with the community, we have a forum here two, two times a month. I would beg you to come and share that. It's not a challenge. We need the information. If you have relevant pertinent information that will be helpful to this community and this council, please come and share it with us. Call me, share it with our new city manager. Come and talk with someone. We want that information. We want the community to be a part of this. Not only will this council remain vigilant, but the community should remain vigilant. There's a lesson to be learned by all the staff members of this city, by all the council members and by all the community of what's happened and where we're going. So I want us all to be a part of that. And before you hit that send button, as an attorney, I tell my clients, don't ever hit that send button if it isn't something that you would want your grandmother to read. And I think that's that old thing, if you can't say something nice, then don't say anything at all. I would just encourage our community to remain supportive and remain positive. And if you have information or questions, come share it with us. We're dying, we're anxious. We want to deal with the issue and resolve it and move forward. You have our commitment. And with that in mind, I want you to understand that the audit is continuing. We didn't have any additional information to share this evening. Auditors have requested some information. That information hasn't, all of it has not been provided yet. Some of, they're having some difficulty obtaining some information. That information is necessary in order to report to us and then for us to share that with you. But in my mind, I see a bound report at some point that will be handed out, that will be available to the community and be shared. And if there's some point that you all think that ought to be audited, that ought to be looked at, or an issue that we've not addressed, we may not know about it. Please feel free to come forward and share. We do live in a great city and always be a great city. With no other business before the council, we stand adjourned.